Now promptly at 9:45, we'll start our 9:45 timed item. And we have a lot of distinguished guests here today. Some of you were flying right over us about a month ago when we were in this chamber's hearing that there had been a flare up. So, thank you for being here today. And obviously Chief Estes and Sheriff Wu, thank you for being here.
Well, thank you and good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. And good morning to everyone and thank you very much on behalf of myself and Sheriff Wu for the opportunity to talk to you again about the events over the past 20 or so days. And I hope to bring a little bit of finality to our presentation today. So I do want to just give a brief overview of the mosquito fire, kind of where we started, where we've come from, and where we are moving to. And can we cue that up, Megan? Okay. I'm not sure if it's... I think while we get the first... There we go. Perfect. So as you remember, it was on the 12th of September that I last spoke to you. Thank you, Megan. And we had a rather eventful day that day. And as you remember, I sat here and I talked to you about the successes we had seen over the past six days. And then I spoke to you in a rather different state of affairs that night, right at the dais here, as we saw some really significant events. And I think that speaks just to kind of the overall events of, you know, of the last 20 days and how dynamic everything was. And so, again, I'm Brian Estes. I'm the State and County Fire Chief. And I will go over just an overview of the mosquito fire and where we sit today. So as we all remember, the fire did start on September 6th at 1,800 hours, 6 o'clock in the evening. It started, the origin was on National Forest System lands just north of Oxbow Reservoir. Almost immediately, as we always do on every single incident within Placer County, we went into unified command with our strong partners in the Placer County Sheriff's Office. We did have some significant weather that afternoon and some thunder cells that collapsed and caused the fire to make some significant spread to the north and northeast. This is a picture taken from our air attack that morning that the fire impacted Michigan Bluff. And I'm going to go through this presentation before I turn it over to my partner. I'm going to introduce some of the people in the back of the room. And some of these people were intricately involved in some of these specific slides that I'm going to talk about. This picture was taken from our air attack and you can see just the dramatic effects of the weather and how even that morning, it was drawing in, the force of that column and the force of the energy out of that fire was drawing smoke away from... At the bottom of that photograph is the impacts to Michigan Bluff. Our priorities, as always, are the protection of life and property, period. That is always our priorities, as is our partners with the Sheriff's Office. Our initial priorities were the defense of Michigan Bluff, Forest Hill, Todd Valley, and all private properties on the Forest Hill Divide. Another important, as Supervisor Gustafson just mentioned, the SPI is a strong partner and has tens of thousands of acres of private timberland that is threatened within the National Forest System lands to the east of Michigan Bluff and where the fire was impacting. And that was also an important consideration from the start. So we initially established that incident command post in Forest Hill. Great cooperation from our local and allied fire agencies across Placer County. And as the ensuing weeks went forth, we saw a regional effort and a statewide effort supporting us out of the grounds in Roseville on our Placer County fairgrounds and multiple times that we impacted the community of Forest Hill. Could not be more thankful to the Forest Hill Fire Protection District, their board, and the community members in Forest Hill for their patience and hospitality for the impact of their community. We did see on September 7th that impact in Michigan Bluff. On the 8th, there was a decision made to activate a Type 1 Incident Management Team. The fire today sits at 87% federal responsibility, 13% private lands. That decision that I made to activate a federal team, I think, is justified by the amount of impacts and jurisdiction and accountability that the federal government has for the acres burned on this fire. And I think that was the right decision. But that doesn't mean that we disengaged at any time. We worked strongly from the beginning and through the entirety of the incident, even up to this very day where we still have daily discussions about cost apportionment. We entered into a unified command, our partners, obviously, with the Sheriff's Office and the U.S. Forest Service, as well as our local fire protection district. That following day, the fire did jump into El Dorado County. And as we've seen so many times in our county with much of our geography separated by the American River Drainage and the Bear River Drainage, when a fire does not meet at the same place in a steep river drainage, the threat for that fire to jump from one side to the other is almost going to be a sure thing. And it did jump into El Dorado County on the 8th, impacting the communities of Quintet, Georgetown, and Volcanoville. One of the things that our folks did, and some of the people standing behind me were very, very proactive in, was building what we call contingency lines. And all told, when we saw those really strong impacts to Forest Hill on the 12th, we had upwards of eight or nine different sets of contingency lines that they were able to utilize. So at no point were we set back on our heels. We were able to forecast what was going to happen and react to it based on proactive planning for the protection of the community of Forest Hill. CAL FIRE committed over 1,500 personnel out of the entirety of 3,500 personnel. Local government agencies from around the state committed over 1,000 people coming to the aid of our citizens in Placer County from the far reaches of California. And then there was September 12th, which I sat here, as you remember, and we talked about the containment lines. And frankly, that was the truth. We had great containment lines due to the strong work in Forest Hill and Todd Valley. And we knew that there was a weather forecast change coming. A cold front was settling in. We knew we were going to get prefrontal winds with that. They came in a lot stronger than we thought. And we also knew that we were coming off the backside of about 10 days of 100-degree-plus temperatures across the county. And so, as oftentimes happens, it's not only about the fire you're fighting, but it's about the next fire that you don't know is coming. And that happened on September 12th. At about 1:30 in the afternoon, a new start happened in the Dutch Flat area caused by hot breaks off of a big rig truck, started a fire that had rapid to critical rate of spread, moving to the north and northwest, impacting the communities of Alta and Dutch Flat. At the same time, the fire jumped back across into Placer County and made a really, really hard run toward the community of Forest Hill, right in the area of Wharton's Market. One of the things that CAL FIRE is always going to do is try to minimize the amount of large fires. We had one large fire already and we could not afford to have another large fire. So the decision was made by our incident commander, our ops chiefs, and our aviation forces to divert all of the aircraft to Dutch Flat. That decision was critical because they were able to stop that fire with that aggressive initial attack at under 50 acres and had no loss of residential structures or threat to life in the Dutch Flat and Alta area. That decision, while it seemed very tenuous for the folks in Forest Hill, was the right decision because it kept our focus in check. And then we were able to move our focus back to Forest Hill. And all of the aircraft came back to Forest Hill in a force that I frankly had not seen in my 32 years of this career. The aviation assets, the commitment of resources to that day, and that what's commonly called the fight for Wharton's Market on the 12th, was something that was, like I said, I hadn't really seen in my career before. I made a couple of phone calls and made sure that both Dutch Flat and Forest Hill were prioritized as the number-one priority in the state. From day one, at the in-brief, our department had prioritized Forest Hill as the number-one priority in the state. And on that afternoon, we had a prioritization for all aircraft in the western United States. There's a couple gentlemen back here that were intricately involved in the aviation forces, but we had 16 fixed-wing air tankers and 12 Type 1 helicopters, Type 1 and Type 2 helicopters, working that event that afternoon. We had every large jet air tanker in the western United States committed to Forest Hill. We had over 50 engines were called immediate need, Code 3 to the Forest Hill Divide by our Operation Section Chief. And as crews took those contingency lines down into the canyon that night, our night-flying Blackhawk helicopter took those crews safely into the canyon, supporting them with almost five hours of nighttime operations. So shortly after that, we did have a weather change and we saw some reduction in the winds, some cooler temperatures, and ultimately, the rain that happened on September 17th, which was really an amazing reprieve to the fire spread that we had seen. We made a decision based on the fact that the fire then was burning on 100% federal jurisdiction to come out of unified command on the 23rd. We've continued to have a strong presence there, but our goal is, number one, to make sure that private lands, private communities, life and property are protected. And once that mitigation was achieved, we came out of unified command out of respect to the cost commensurate with the values at risk and our ability to mitigate future incidents. This is a map that shows really the stop of the fire at its last progression. It's a little hard to tell, but the gray areas to the... On both of the east, on the north and south side of the fire represent, on the south end, the King Fire burn, and on the north end, the American Fire burn. So it did hit both of those burn scars, but we had contingency plans in place with decision points for the west shore of Lake Tahoe, had it continued to burn to the east. One of the interesting things, as Kerry was talking a little bit about fuel reduction, is that King Fire from 2014 and the American Fire from earlier than that are both seeing regrowth that will carry fire through those burn scars. So the maintenance of these fuel reduction projects that we talk about into the future is just as important as the initial work that we talk about funding to be done. So our final statistics on the mosquito fire, 76,000-plus acres burned. We are at 98% containment. We are out of unified command. The Forest Service is in command of the fire at this point. We had a total of 22 residential structures destroyed in Placer County. The majority of those, unfortunately, were in Michigan Bluff and then a couple of them in Forest Hill proper. We estimate over 3,000 structures were saved through firefighting efforts and good home hardening and defensible space. And our cost to date is in excess of $150 million. So in reference to Supervisor Gustafson's comments, the cost of suppression these days is incredibly expensive. This is the largest wildland fire in recorded history in Placer County, and it was our number-one priority in the state from the day that it started. I think we had some really positive lessons learned from the fire. And as all of you have heard me say, our commitment to unified command, our commitment to transparent and proactive communication with the public is always paramount to us. And before I recognize the folks in the back, I just want to thank the community members in Forest Hill and Todd Valley and Michigan Bluff and all of the community members around this county for the support of not only our first responders, but their own communities and the resilience of those communities. So if you would allow me to recognize a couple of our folks in the back. First and foremost, sitting behind me back there in the back of the room was our Unified Incident Commander, my Deputy Chief Jim Hudson, and our... Another Deputy IC, Brian Mackwood, Assistant Chief Brian Mackwood, who was our constant EOC liaison and kept a constant communication with the Sheriff's Office and OES and the Fire Department. Standing over here, Assistant Chief Mike Ruffinott was our Deputy IC and has remained as the Arep and is currently still assigned to the fire to ensure that Placer County's interests are met every single day on this incident. Nolan Hale, one of our newest battalion chiefs in the unit, was the Operation Section Chief, one of the most critical, strategic, and tactical decision-maker. And he was the gentleman who I was standing behind over his shoulder on that day on September 12th. He was a little nervous, but he did really, really well. Very proud of him. Made great decisions. And Andy Gregerson, who Supervisor Holmes, I know you appreciate seeing Andy. His actions out there in Michigan Bluff that first night were just really, really critical, not only in preservation of life and property, but in... We had some situations with our own firefighters that were incredibly close and very, very dangerous. And his leadership was paramount to that. So now we'll get to the folks that flew over us that afternoon. So first and foremost is my air attack group supervisor out of Grass Valley, Sean Ryan, who flew the air attack and oversaw those flight operations through the entire mosquito fire, but specifically on that day where he made the decision to divert those aircraft to Dutch Flat. So critical, such a critical decision in both fires. Colin Rogers, the gentleman in the gray flight suit back there, is one of our air tanker pilots out of Grass Valley, flew Tanker 88 numerous hours on this fire and on Dutch Flat. Ryan Gumbala is one of our... He's the chief pilot for HeliOne, and he has been our strong partner for the last two years with both our Type 1 helicopter and our Type 2 helicopter based out of Auburn. And then a couple of our folks that represent the McClellan Air Tanker Base, which brings those large, heavy jet air tankers to the game. And that's first, Tim Stepanovich, who's what we call an Aerial Supervision Module Officer, and his pilot of Charlie 5, Don Bell. And the difference is, they're flying another one of the YOVI-10 Broncos that's leading in the jet air tankers at low level, high speed, in a very, very dangerous situation. And the coordination that happened over the fire that day was just absolutely amazing. And I'm very, very proud of all these folks. So I appreciate you letting me recognize those people before I turn it over to Sheriff Wu.
Thank you, Chief. And we will get a photo later, so stay tuned.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
It's a pleasure to be here. It's really an honor to stand next to Chief Estes and kind of report out and brief you guys on the final statistics and the success of what has turned out to be the largest wildland fire in our county's history. I think it really is a testament to all the preparation, pre-planning, and training that we've both done as organizations. In my career, we started partnering with CAL FIRE doing annual training two decades ago. And we've only expanded on that training and prepared for a day like this and an incident like this. And I think it all paid great dividends throughout this incident. I want to thank you guys for your continued support. Last time I was here, we talked about the mobile command vehicle and the importance of the take-home car program and things like that. There were some key integral components to our success, but also your support in the past for the Sheriff's Office having the honor and privilege to partner with CAL FIRE and Type 1 Incident Management Teams. The board supported that when then Shane Wright, before he was the undersheriff, was appointed to a Type 1 CAL FIRE Incident Management Team, deployed all over the state of California on major incidents. And I would argue that those incident management teams are the most professional experienced in the country. And we've continued that tradition on with Shane's promotion. And we have Lieutenant Josh Tindall from our agency, who's currently on one of those incident management teams. And the experience that we've been able to gain through partnering with CAL FIRE on those incident management teams paid off huge when this came to our home here in Placer County. So I'll start just with a quick update. This was the kind of the final map of the evacuation zones. The purple area is the rough footprint of the fire. The red zones were the mandatory evacuation zones, and the yellow represented evacuation warnings. Like the chief mentioned, we always jump into unified command early on in these incidents. We made these decisions for evacuation zones and orders and warnings in collaboration with our fire partners and the fire behavior specialists. Generally, the evacuation orders are when we feel there's a direct threat to life. Those are lawful orders, and we shut down those areas and deny access. The warning areas are when we believe there's a potential threat to life and property, and we're trying to give people some forewarning to be prepared in case fire behavior changes or people that might have livestock or medical ailments that maybe they should think about getting out a little sooner and preparing a little quicker than waiting for that evacuation order to come to their area where they live. So one of the things that I think, when I talked about pre-planning, was our evacuation efforts. You know, we focused on Forest Hill for many years. We've done plenty of training exercises, and we're always working with the citizens of the Forest Hill community and their concerns over limited ingress and egress out of the Divide. In the initial stages of the incident, I'm proud to say that we were able to evacuate the Michigan Bluff area in roughly just over an hour. When it came to the downtown Forest Hill and Forest Hill proper, we were able to evacuate that area in about two and a half hours. And then a couple of days later, when we had to evacuate the community of Todd Valley, we were able to accomplish that in right around four hours. I'm extremely proud of the effort that members of law enforcement and my staff put in to make that happen. As the slide denotes, we had over 120 peace officers from around the region descend on Forest Hill during that time to make sure everybody was evacuated safely and that we didn't leave anybody behind. We accomplished that through Placer Alert, our Everbridge Notification System, our high-low sirens, and of course, we did door-to-door evacuations as well. In the end, we ended up evacuating roughly 2,644 homes, which was a total of just under 6,000 Placer County residents were evacuated. We did have 90 refusals, and that roughs out to about a 98.5% compliance rate, which is really phenomenal. It's one of the better compliance rates I've seen in my career as far as evacuations go. And I think it's a testament to the whole campaign that Placer County has engaged in for many years now with ReadyPlacer.org and the Placer Alert system and getting people to sign up for that notification. In closing, throughout the duration of this incident, we had well over 25 law enforcement agencies that helped us, whether it was in the initial evacuation efforts or in just securing the area once evacuations were conducted. They represented agencies from all over Northern California. Within the Placer County Sheriff's Office, we had over 170 of our own staff that were deployed on the incident over time. And I'd like to say, you know, give a shout out to those members of my staff. We had over 30 members of the Sheriff's Office that were actually in the evacuation zone. And all those people continued to show up for work regardless of what role they played in the organization, and some were even out there working in the Forest Hill Divide while they were under evacuation orders and they weren't able to go to their own homes. We're still tallying up the totals, but that's going to be well over 8,000 man-hours from our office. And I'm also proud to say that through the heroic efforts of CAL FIRE and the Fire Service, we had zero fatalities throughout this incident, even though it is the largest fire we've seen in Placer County. We did have one law enforcement injury, and it was a minor traffic collision with an animal commuting to and from the Divide. And we had one arrest. It was an active burglary in progress in an evacuated area, and a person was taken into custody. And when we repopulated, we had no more reports of any kind of theft or looting that occurred on the Divide. So I commend all of our staff for their efforts and all the law enforcement agencies that assisted us to ensure that our residents weren't further victimized as they were displaced and going through this traumatic event. So with that, I'd like to thank the board for all of your continued support in getting us the tools we need to make something like this successful. Like the chief mentioned, we've already done some debriefs at our own shop. And while experiencing these Type 1 Incident Management Teams and the preparation, I think, really set us up for success, we have continued to learn from this incident, and it will make us better, both our organizations, moving forward. A couple of my staff I'd like to recognize, I got Captain Brian Silva in the back room. He's a brand-new field operations captain just since I took office in the domino effect. And he's been kind of thrown in the deep end with a couple of major incidents. And so this incident was his responsibility. And then Lieutenant Josh Barnhart, who also recently changed assignments and has become our lieutenant over public information, and he's been pretty busy over a couple of sustained incidents that our department has faced over the last couple of months. So I couldn't be more proud of all of my staff and our collaboration with the Fire Service. And I want to thank you for having us here today and thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, Sheriff Wu, and incredible efforts. I know we have lots of compliments to pay as well. I'll start with a question. I don't see other lights on yet. On the resources, the federal resources, I can't help but note 87% of this fire being on federal lands, and yet, by my calculation, only about 1,000 of the 3,500 firefighters were with the Forest Service. Is that... Are my notes correct on that?
Yes, Supervisor, from the beginning, between... On the low end, they had about 500 people assigned to the incident, and the highest count that they had was about 1,100 on the federal agencies all combined.
So I think for the well-being of our communities being surrounded with federal lands, we need to continue to work with our congressional representatives and our... All of our federal representatives to try to make sure that we get those resources out to protect them. I can't thank all of you enough, from our local agency with our sheriff to our state fire. But we definitely need more federal resources for these federal lands. And I'll keep fighting that fight. We need to make sure that we get adequately staffed. And you know, we were on the phone during... There were times during the fire when I was asked to call, and all of the offices assured me that, yes, more help was coming, but it paled in comparison to what the state mobilized to protect our communities. And I'm so thankful to the state for doing that.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Supervisor Holmes?
Yes, thank you, Chief and Sheriff Wu. Really appreciate the update. I want to thank all those folks in the back that did the yeoman's work to make sure that our community and our citizens were safe. But it all starts at the top. And I think, under your leadership, Chief Estes and Sheriff Wu, that we have two of the top law enforcement and public safety leaders in the state of California. And your... The work that you've done together proves that to me as far as I'm concerned. So just thank you, everyone, for your diligence and hard work in saving the communities that we represent. Thank you so much.
Supervisor Wykamp?
Senator, we're going to have a further policy discussion on this later, so I'll keep my comments more brief and just go through a little bit of therapy of things you've heard me say in the past. But Senator, I want to, first of all, reiterate Jim's comments about thanking both of you, Sheriff Wu and Chief Estes and all of the folks that you work with. It's a real privilege, actually, having you serve with our office of OES, Dave Atkins in the back. What could have happened on the negative side, to me, is just astounding, only to think that what could have happened to COFAK's last year, replicating things like what we see in paradise, should be very sobering. And my frustration is the lack of federal and even state attention to the gravity issue. And interestingly, they sort of had lunch with a personal friend of mine who's a scientist, because we're supposed to follow science these days, but he's an entomologist, spent his career with the Forest Service. And as an entomologist, he ended up studying pine-barked beetles and became an expert on forest management, has a PhD from UC Davis and undergraduate degrees from Cal Berkeley. But he told me 20 years ago that for lack of really paying attention to the source of the problem, which is the lack of management in the forest and the money that's necessary to make sure we really put our forest in a position they were 100 years ago, we were going to see these kinds of problems get worse and worse. And over my 28 years at the county, that's exactly what we have seen articulated by the fact that, as you've mentioned, this is the worst fire we've seen in Placer County. So obviously, the worst fire I've seen in my career. And at $150 million in just fighting the fire, not to mention the amazing work, Wayne, you guys did with the evacuation and the lack of injury that occurred. That's like $2,000 per acre for the fire, when I think current cost of treating the forest in the first place is about $5,000 an acre if it's in really bad shape, so we can pay now or pay later. But Brian, you mentioned that this fire burned into two prior fires where forest management also has not been done after those fires. And since the forests weren't managed, they could have burned again, since it's been 10 and 20 years probably for both of those fires. So again, we're going to take this up more later, but huge thanks to both of you and your teams. And I think... your teams, and I think what we have an opportunity to do in Placer County is set an example. We're doing a small pilot project, if you will, in partnership with the Water Agency and some other efforts that really look at how forests ought to be managed if, in fact, we're going to have public ownership of these forests. But I hope that as I walk out the door that there's more and more attention to that and that the county, working with our partners, can be a real partner in giving state and federal attention to what really is problem in the western United States, but probably worse here in California. So thanks.
Thanks, Robert. Supervisor Jones?
I would also like to extend my personal thanks and gratitude to all of you. When you mentioned unified command with the PCSO, I'm always amazed, and I've said this in the past, at seeing the reports, how everybody comes together, and across the state, they all came together, but it amazes me how you all, all work together in unity to accomplish a mission. And I think it's no better exhibited than Placer County when you talk about our public safety running to the danger, running to the fire, running to the danger. All of you, I just want to tell you all, thank you very much. I really appreciate it, and I know Placer County residents appreciate it too.
Jane?
Thank you, Board Chair. Just a brief note, thanks to Sheriff Wu and to Chief Estes as well for providing a preview of this debrief to our department heads last week, many of whom are now involved in the important work as we shift from response to recovery. But great thanks to you both, as I said at that meeting. Fortune favors not only the brave but the prepared, which I think speaks to all the work that was done by you and your team, so thank you.
Great, just a second, Paula. I just, again, echo all of these comments and can't help but get emotional when I see the photos at Wharton's and think about what could have been in our whole community being destroyed up there, and so hats off to all of you. And to get everybody out safely, we've heard this time and time again, people's fear of evacuation, that we're not going to get them out. You got them all out, and you got them all out. Michigan Bluff is not an easy ingress or egress, neither was the river fire, some of those streets, and your staff kept their homes, got the people out safely, and kept their homes safe during the evacuation, which was, they were so afraid of. And tremendous heroes out there, those of you who fly those planes and helicopters, those with boots on the ground risking your lives to save the community, getting to go out there. The chief always insists on getting me out there, and I've had to warn him that sometimes I'm not as, feeling as safe in the vehicle as I would like when I feel the heat coming in the side, but it is tremendous to be out there and see what you go through. My son is a firefighter, and so I have great admiration for all of what you do and all of our first responders for keeping our community safe. That's what makes Placer County so great, this teamwork, this leadership. And I've got to thank the Incident Command Team and the base camp, going to see the base camp. I think we all got a chance to get down there at various times. To see a city mobilized to serve our residents in Placer County was tremendous, and those briefings that were done in the morning and the evening went so far in helping the community members understand what was going on. And I'd watch on social media, especially up in the Tahoe area, people were afraid that it was going to keep coming, and there were so many resources to educating the public as to what was happening. I can't say enough about that public communication, Josh, so thank you, and making sure that the communities are briefed and understand what's happening. But there's no words for us to express our gratitude on behalf of the communities. So with that, I know we have at least one member of the public that would like to speak. Paula, would you like to go ahead and come up? And do we have others on Zoom? Okay. Nope, you're good to go.
Well, thank you, Supervisor Gustafson. She takes on all my emails, my photos, my badgering, can we get more of this and that, and she really has delivered, so thank you. Our vegetation program management in Forest Hill is strong, and I put in a request, maybe if in November, we can get the transfer station open on Tuesdays for greenways. Now, going from there, Chief Estes is the bomb. He has put up with me for the last five years. He has educated us, I have drilled him, he's come to our public meetings, he talked about Paradise. Forest Hill took all the lessons from Paradise very seriously, and I badgered that community. I badgered them to clean up, support Measure B, support our Little Fire District, because education starts in our community. And I would think Mickelani, our Fire Boy President, did a great job educating the community, and I think that's what made a difference. I really want to look at these gentlemen in the background, because my house is one of the house they saved. You know where I live. I live across, I live almost right next to the property that burned that belonged to Chase Stowling, across from the Forest Hill High School, on the same side as Wharton's, across from Volcano Creek. I love the color pink. In fact, I did a little community gathering, colored me pink, and the Saturday before the fire started, I put up a couple of tables in my front yard umbrellas, and it's a social gathering, and we did a lot of forewarning of our community. The weather was ripe for a fire, and I said, "If it comes up that back canyon behind my house," I said, "You guys, if you see smoke, one hour. You see flames, 10 minutes." I said, "We're not waiting for that. Everybody get ready, because we could be going this week." That is how I felt it. On Tuesday, when it happened, we were all on the phone in Forest Hill. As that power went down, the first flame came, we were all noticing each other, and we said, "We're not waiting for warnings. You listen to the sheriff, be ready to go. Education, education, education." We were all on high alert. That's why we got that 98.5. After everything was happening, I trusted these individuals as people sent me photos of what they were doing while I was in Tiburon having a vacation. I kind of feel guilty on that, but there's nothing I could do, and I trusted they knew what they were doing. You don't have to justify, if you went to Dutch Flat, you're the decision-makers. We trust you. So with that, we had a follow-up, and all the community is very happy, Supervisor Gustafson. Chief Estes, thank you for partnering with our Little Fire District. The sheriff did a great job. Animal control was amazing, amazing. So we're saved this time, but I can tell you one thing, we all not stopping right now, we all getting ready for the next one. So we are really, really hyper vigilant and very, very grateful, very grateful. We know they flew and worked a lot of hours. When we got back home, we were watching for all these hot spots that were popping up right in my backyard. I got to talk to forestry, CAL FIRE, the tankers, they were there, wonderful, wonderful people, and I'm glad they can now go home to their home base and maybe Forest Hill gets a break, but thank you. That's all I wanted to say is thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Appreciate your comments very much. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Okay, well, this was the largest wildfire in Placer County's history. How about we keep it that way for a very long time? We appreciate that very much. And could we get a photo instead of you all standing back there? Why don't you line up up here, and we'll try to capture this moment, and thank you.
Do you want to shoot?
I'm going to stand up here.
And then we can stand up up here behind.
Want us down here?
On both sides, Megan's chair there too.
Is Megan's desk there maybe, something like that?
While they're coming up.
I think we're okay up here.
The four of you, and I need you to squeeze in, maybe move the taller people in back and do two rows over here.
You can come to our side too.
Or you can sit in this side.
Yeah, there you go. Crossover.
Hey, no recruiting, no recruiting while here.
We've got to catch that poster. Right. The largest photo we've ever taken in here, I think. All right. All right, are we ready? You're going to take a bunch. Keep your eyes open, keep smiling. All right, here we go. One more. Keep smiling, eyes open. All right, got it.